So, good evening, everyone. I am going to call this January 25th, 2022 meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. We will start with a roll call. Norma Drummond, Chair of the zoning board. Jim?
James Meyer, present.
Aziz?
Aziz Assam.
And Rocco?
Rocco Lometone, President.
Good. So, we may be expecting one more board member. If he joins, we'll have him, you know, just identify himself when he gets here. So, this evening, we are operating in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order that allows us to do virtual meetings that were properly noticed. The meeting is being recorded. It will be available, you know, via transcript if anybody needs it. We do actually also adopt minutes of these meetings that are also will be on file and available for anybody from the public who wishes to join. There are no public hearings this evening, okay? There were no new applications that this board reviewed at last month's meeting. So, and actually, our agenda this evening is actually pretty light. We only have two reviews on. And so, these are the first time that this board is seeing these applications. What we will do this evening is just work through, make sure we understand these, what it is that you're asking for, and we will take it from there. So, I'm acknowledging the fact that I did not start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, if everybody doesn't mind, if I could ask you to stand and we'll stay the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd appreciate that. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. All right. So, we do have, well, in the interest of Chair's remarks, the Governor's Order actually allows us to continue with virtual meetings until such time as the pandemic is over, correct, Michael? Or as much as the emergency is over? Correct? So, we can continue with virtual meetings going forward?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. So, is it the pleasure of the board that our February meeting be virtual?
I would suggest so.
I would too, just given the veracity of the Omicron, you know, variant going around, it just makes sense to just, especially in Dutchess County here, it makes sense. So.
No, the thing is, if the town, if there's a snow emergency on that day and the town, you know, hall is closed, do we still do a Zoom meeting at that time?
Yes, because there's no reason not to. We'll have noticed. So, you know, that's the one advantage of doing Zoom is the weather doesn't impact our ability to hold a meeting then. So.
Okay. I support having at least February meeting on Zoom.
Okay. So, we'll continue going forward with this for at least February. And in February, we'll just, we'll talk about March. We do have one set of minutes to approve with very, oh my gosh, I think there were two corrections to it. So.
So moved.
Second.
Second on favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. So, for the folks who are here for these two reviews, what we will do is just work our way through them so that the board members understand them, understand what you're asking for. And then, if appropriate, we will schedule them for a public hearing at the next meeting. You'll have to call Jeannie Burkhardt, clerk here this evening, to get information on posting a sign that you'll have to put out on your, you know, on your property so that your neighbors will be aware. But your neighbors would also get a notice of the meeting and how to participate in the meeting in the event that they want to make any comments to your application. So, let's just kind of work our way through the two meetings. I should start by saying our next meeting is February 22nd and then March 22nd as well, both of those Tuesday evenings. So, item number one is Appeal 4023 Mohammed Rahman. Mohammed Rahman, 81 Broadway, Hopewell Junction is requesting a nine-foot sideline variance to allow an existing 12-foot by 20-foot or 240-square-foot rear deck pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. So, this is no public hearing, but Mr. Rahman, if you could raise your hand, then our attorney will be able to have you join so that we can have a discussion with you. There you are. Good. All right. So, again, this is the first time, it's kind of funny that we have two neighbors, almost neighbors before us with similar applications. So, if you don't mind taking us through what it is that you are looking for, obviously, there's a rear deck on your property. I guess we'll start with, did you build that deck or was it there when you bought the house? Mr. Rahman? Sorry, Michael, I should have said, what does he have to do to unmute?
I'm taking a look right now. Mr. Rahman, are you connected to audio?
If you could put a note in the chat, Mr. Rahman, that could tell us if we have an issue here.
I'll try sending the call-in number as well.
This is the issue about Zoom, that's the little bit of a pain in the neck sometimes, making the technology actually work.
The applicant is on video, and I don't know why the mute, the audio is not working because his picture is there. So, it's not on.
Yeah, but it could be he doesn't have a microphone. So, again, he's got a screenshot that's up. It's not.
That's true.
So, Mr. Rahman, if you don't have the ability to speak through your computer, if you can call the phone number that Michael has posted in the chat.
Then you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. So, I do see a call-in number now.
Hello?
Mr. Rahman, this is you calling in?
Yes, Brandon is here.
Oh, Brandon. Okay. All right, Brandon, we've called the first applicant and we're trying to find out, figure out how we can get his audio working.
Gotcha. Just having trouble myself getting in here.
Oh, okay.
We can also go to the next agenda item and then give Mr. Rahman some time to come back.
Okay. Why don't we do that?
Screenshot there, but he's not moving. So, that's not an active video.
Yeah. All right. So, Mr. Rahman, if you can figure out the audio, in the meantime, we will call, we'll do a second call and come back to you. But in the meantime, let's go to item number two, which is Appeal 4024 Cindy and Ahmed. I want to make sure I'm saying your name, Elgar correctly. So, Cindy and Ahmed Elgar, 122 Broadway, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 32-foot rear line variance to allow a proposed 20-foot by 30-foot or 600-square-foot addition pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. So, Cindy is.
Michael Gillespie is here as well.
Oh, okay. All right. Good.
Hello, everybody. Good evening.
Hi. Hi, we can see you. Good. So, do you know your neighbor?
Yeah, you know, I want to just start and apologize. I have to be in the car this evening to do the Zoom. We didn't get any gas delivery for our heat, so I have two toddlers running around in the house going crazy. So, I had to come to the car to talk to you. I'm sorry if it's a little dark. I'm trying to stay in the light.
That's fine. We can see you. So, that's fine. And so, Mr. Gillespie is here to present.
Hi, Mike.
Hey, yeah.
He's got plenty of light.
The heat is on. Yes, I'm going to report. The, what I'm here for, we're actually doing the addition plans for Mr. and Mrs. Elgar. So, you know, I figured I'd just jump in. It's a fairly straightforward application. Yeah, they are proposing an addition 600 square foot off the, effectively, the rear of their little bit oddly shaped parcel. And, you know, based upon a number of considerations, based upon the layout of the current property and so forth, it's really the best and, you know, the alternative in terms of its location. So, there is an existing setback, and I don't have the map in front of me unfortunately, but if you're looking at it, whereabouts, there's actually much less than the 50-foot that we're even proposing. So, I think, I guess it's worthy to have discussion. We're certainly looking for the variance relative to the new addition. But is, does it make more sense to just because the existing house is less than what we're proposing, is it easy just to clean it up that way? If you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah. So, taking a look at the map that you've provided, where you've, you know, put in the addition. So, one corner of the, of the existing house is only 14 feet, five inches away from the property line.
Right.
I mean, and then the back, closest part of the back addition is 18 feet, seven inches. How far is, how far on that side, Michael? I'm, I'm going to guess to the corner because it looks like maybe there's a set of stairs that come out of the back of the existing house. It looks like it's the existing house is 34 feet, nine inches away from the property line. The bottom of the stairs, it looks like.
On the right-hand side?
On the back, the back left, which is if it's, if it's catacornered with the property line there. So, it's the closest on the back property line.
Corner where the addition goes on, Michael.
Yeah, the corner where the addition, exactly. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, I think Cindy, I think, I don't think there's anything there now, right?
No, there isn't.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if that was like a pre-existing from the old survey, but nothing exists there now.
Jim, do you see what I'm seeing? That there's this little box in the back there. I'm trying to figure out how close the existing house is to that property line.
I'm not sure why the box is there. I don't think that's the stairs, though. I'm not sure why that was drawn by the surveyor. They, he seems to be drawing rectangular boxes around all the measurements.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, could be.
Oh, okay. Maybe a drafting thing or.
Yeah, I'm not sure why he's doing it that way.
So, it looks like the existing house at that point doesn't conform anyway. So, with the addition, you're just looking to, you're going to make it less conforming. But tell me what's behind that property line where it says remains stone wall.
Cindy, maybe you can chime in, but from what I recall, behind the property, there's nothing. And to the left of the property, there's an existing vacant lot. Oh, I think it's safe to say woods, but confirm that.
Yes, it's all woods around us.
But is it protected woods? Is it just somebody's property?
It's all one property. It's all one vacant lot, ma'am. It, the vacant lot, that's to the side of us, where towards the extension where we would like to have it, it actually loops around the back of the house, almost like an upside-down L shape.
So, you have a five-sided property? Yeah, kind of. So, the, so what not, now or formerly siren would be, would have been the owner of the, is that the property that loops around yours?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
The map says now or formerly siren, which is S-I-R-E-N. So, is that your neighbor? Do you know?
No, no, that's not our neighbor. I think the name, from what I saw, the owners are put down on papers as the Lomala Development Corp.
Oh, Lomala. Okay.
Yes. I always get it confused. Some people tell me Lomala, some people Lomala, so I never know how to say it.
Sorry, I'm looking up Bing Maps right now just to get it, to be able to see it, see what's around it. Michael, do I have the ability to share? My screen? Ah, yes, I do. Hold on, guys. Hold on. All right. So, I've got to move you guys. Let's bring this a little closer. That's what can help. All right. So, Lomala. So, Broadway, let's get our bearings here. So, here's Route 82 on this side. Let me shut this a little bit. Here's Route 82 over here. Florinas, you've got the gas station handshakes. So, the gas station's over here. So, here's your bearings, guys. Okay? So, this is Loma, Loma Road comes in, and then that's where Broadway connects into.
Okay.
And then, yeah, it is, you are definitely surrounded by a ton of woods. But I don't, you know.
Yeah, if you come down Inky off of 82, which is a little further up, it's basically, at the Inky, hit Broadway, it's a quick right and the property's right on the left.
Okay. And the other neighbor, just sort of the other application is just right in the same area as well. So, okay. So, yeah, you've got. Found you. So, anything you do, you're not really impacting a neighbor. That's the important thing for us to consider.
Yeah, and the property's pretty, you know, the topography of the parcel, such the house sits up, but it's, 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 it's pretty good length off the road. So, I don't necessarily know if you'd see too much from that vantage point.
Trying to see if I can even find, it looks like this is the lot here. But, dude, why Bing Maps takes pictures while, you know, aerials when there's leaves on the trees? I don't know. It's not the purpose of, you know, the best way to do aerials. All right. Well, anyway, just to give you, give us some sense. So, there's, that's, I'm going to stop sharing. So, that's what's around you. So, guys, that, for the board members, the issue is that we're making a, in essence, non-conforming house, less conforming. But, Michael, we should just clean up this whole thing, right?
That's the thought. And, you know, that's, that's, you know, yes, the answer is yes.
Okay.
When was the house built?
Originally, I think it was 1950, and then they had done an extension to the original property. I don't know if you see it there on the original survey map. The extension was done, I believe, in 1985, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. So, and by extension, you mean an addition?
It was an addition to the original, yes, cabin that was there. So, that's when they probably had that setback for the 14 and a half feet.
Okay. Can you tell me, where is your driveway?
So, we, we have a driveway that's, if you're looking at the property from the bottom of the road, it'd be on the left, which would be where the extension would be going. The, so the driveway goes directly up.
So, where is it? The drive, the driveway enters from Broadway, comes in front of a garage, and then kind of weirs left towards the house. Is that right?
There's no garage up there. So, it would actually just comes to like a flat landing. So, if you look at the map that's there with the pre-existing home, the original cabin, there's an entrance there for the home.
Yeah.
When you say the original cabin, the survey says one-story frame. That was the original house. And they put the larger rectangular addition off the back, and then you want to put a second addition to the left of that.
Correct. But why there's a garage?
Does show a garage.
Yeah, the survey is showing, is there another building or another structure in the front of your house closer to the front?
Yes, that's in front of the home is a separate one-car garage. Yes.
Oh, okay. So, there is a garage. Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. So, because the issue would be, Michael, it's a garage in front of the house. So, we have to take detached garage in front of the house. We got to take care of that, too.
Yeah.
When was the garage made, the one in the front?
I believe it was during the same time that the addition was done in 1985. So, we purchased our home five years ago, pre-pandemic. So, this is how we purchased it. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's, there's some age to it. I mean, we, I don't have the property card in front of me, but we can, we can get our hands on that. But it certainly goes back. And I have to believe, too, the, the grade of the driveway going to the main house is, let's just say, when we got the ice the other day, and I've got a four-wheel pickup, I didn't, I didn't go up. So, it's.
Wow.
So, I have to believe they installed that, maybe that garage for the purposes of just kind of parking their car and then, and then walking up some steps up to the home.
Okay. All right. So, what is, what is the addition? What is, what is this space going to be used for?
So, it's just going to be additional living space and basically like a relocation of the existing bedrooms.
So, one, one story or two stories?
It'd be two stories. Michael, it's not, it's not a story and a half, is it, Mike?
Yeah, no, it's, there's a, there's a, it's a, I guess it could be a story and a half, yes. Because the existing house is basically one story now. So, and, and regards to the bedroom, we're not increasing any of the bedrooms. We're doing kind of a reshuffle.
Question.
I know. Why said it? We're doing a little bit of a reshuffling to hold bedroom count. So.
Okay. Comments or questions from board members?
Is the subject for two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom?
The septic is for three-bedroom, two-bath. So, we're going to keep exactly everything the same, three-bedroom, two-bath.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good.
That was Aziz's ex, my question. So, I have no further questions.
So, we need to be clear on what are we grant, what would be, we'd be suing a public hearing for? So, it appears that.
We need variants for the sideline and the rear line?
Yeah, let's start with that. Let's start with the addition. So, because Jeannie, I want to make sure you and Jackie get what you need. So, it's a 32-foot rear line addition. So, 32 and 18 is 50. So, that's, you need that. But then, the 34 feet, I guess that's a sideline. So, that works. Now, so then we need, if we've got 14 feet to the, I guess that's another rear line. So, the other side needs a 36-foot rear line variance. Right, guys? Where it says the 14 and a half, 14 feet, five inches, that's a rear line.
I don't know if it's, I'm having difficulty whether it's a rear line or a sideline.
Well, there's, there are two sidelines because if you're at Broadway, you've got, you know, start where, from there, you've got two sidelines, and then you've got two rear lines here.
Okay.
I would say it's a rear line.
Yeah, that's a rear line. So, that's got to be 50 feet. So, so the existing, and then, and this house, if the house was built in 1950, it predated zoning. So, again, not, not nobody's fault here. It was just how the property was developed.
So, 36 foot is fine.
Yeah, so 36 feet for the rear line of the existing house.
Correct.
Um, Michael, I don't see measurements on the garage. But, so we need a variance to put a detached garage, an existing detached garage in the front of the house.
Yep.
But I don't know how close that is to the rear property line. If, if in the back is 30 feet, I'm going to guess it's at least 30. The question is whether we've got 50.
So, there's one provision that requires a variance slowly because the detached garage is in the front yard, right?
Right.
Right.
I guess that would be defined as an accessory structure, right?
Right.
And there's certain, based on the size of the garage, is there a variance that we would need for that?
No, because you're not building it. It's there already.
Okay.
Well, Mike, and that's my question. If we give the variance for the 36 feet, as long as they still within that variance for the garage, does another one need it? Right? We've got to give the variance for the existing house for 36 feet.
Right.
And certainly more than 14 feet away. So, once they have a sideline variance for 36 feet, do they?
But it's a detached garage.
Right.
I understand. So, we need the variance in front, but do we need another sideline variance for the garage itself?
Yeah, it has to be identified.
I don't think it's a sideline. I think it would be a rear line if we needed it. So, Michael Cunningham, if we're approving or if we're reviewing that a garage is in the front of a house, do I still also have to worry about a rear line setback for that structure?
No, it would just be the point of variance.
So, forget the whole conversation, guys.
Okay.
Let's keep it simple.
Normally, but there's a deck, stairs that might be around that, I don't know, I'm assuming they are, they will be, you know.
They're all covered with the 36-foot.
I'm assuming because, because it says 27 feet, four inches to the corner of the one-story frame, but then there's this deck and stairs, which I don't know the dimensions of. And I'm assuming it's 14.5, 14 feet, five inches, five inches.
So, if we say though, Aziz, this is my suggestion, if we say that we're granting a 36-foot rear line variance for the existing house,
Yes.
that should cover all of those points.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is what I was trying to say to you.
Okay. Perfect.
All right. Motion for public hearing?
So, most.
On favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Good.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Cindy. We'll see you next month.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Cindy, if you can, please call, or Michael, somebody call Jeannie tomorrow just to make sure you guys get your sign up. Okay?
Will do. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Bye.
All right, Mr. Rahman. We have a Matt Rickett. Who is Mr. Rickett?
The zoning administrator.
Oh, thank you. It's for the board members' attention, Matt Rickett is going to be joining us instead of Rick Cronizer. So, all right. But, Mr. Rahman, are we able to hear you now or?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I was in another meeting. I'm at the workplace.
Oh, okay. All right. No problem.
So, I'm sorry for that. So, I heard like, you know, everything will be. So, I don't know about my one, my property.
So, you're, so we're going to go back to your application and you, this is an existing rear deck. Did you put the deck on the house or when you bought the house was the deck there?
Like, you know, I closed the house in January, I mean, December 1st, and the deck was, like, you know, was built like, I think, a long time ago.
Okay. So, you're just looking to clean up this issue because it probably showed up on a title report or something?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know how old the deck is and what kind of condition it's in?
Oh, I think the building department went to see and inspected, and they require something. So, like, you know, notification, like, what we needed to done. So, we have to work on that.
All right. Hold on. Let me see. I think I have the report from the building inspector. Hold on.
Okay. Good night.
The home, okay, the home needs a variance here, too. Do we have a survey for Mr. Rahman's property? 81 Broadway. Yes, we do. Okay, good. Rear deck and home are both 16 plus or minus feet from the sideline. The structures and rear property predate zoning. So, that is, this is Matt's report here.
I'm looking at a survey. It's same one as Ramsey Land Surveying.
Yes.
It seems like there's several structures on that property.
Actually, there are two houses on the property. It's a flag lot. So, the back is a flag lot. And the applicant is in the front. The front is the applicant, and the back is a flag lot for somebody else. And the applicant is in the front. The front is the applicant, and the back is a flag lot for somebody else.
I don't think so. I think it's the same, well, the same lot.
That's what I'm thinking, and that's.
It has two different parcel numbers.
Two different parcel on it. So one is on, or, uh, another one is on this field. So, well, I, I mean, what I see is both of them are wet, wet zone, wet land.
Both of them are what?
Wet, wet land.
Oh, it's in a wet, oh, you, you've got the creek there. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Because last, you know, it was like, like, a lot of.
Where's the dividing line between the two lots?
There, that's the line.
Sprout Creek? No, that can't be Sprout Creek. It has to be in front of that, to be between the two houses.
Yeah.
It does say parcel number. There's two different parcel numbers.
Three, there's three parcel numbers.
Three is only two.
No, there's three. The, the, the third one looks like it's referencing the neighboring parcel. There's, there's a bunch of parcel numbers, yeah. Okay, so I agree. I'm not seeing where the, um, line is because there's a one-story frame garage and a one-story wood frame, which is a house very close to the creek.
Uh-huh. It's like a sun, I mean, sitting area, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Is that your house, Mr. Ramen? Which one is your house, closer to Broadway or in the back?
By the creek, there is a, yeah, eighty-one Broadway. By the creek, there is a garage, parking garage, and there is one like, you know, sitting area. I don't know what it's called. It's like a porch, something.
Oh, okay, so that's not a house.
No, no, it's not a house.
Okay.
So the house is near Broadway. That's the house.
Yeah, that's the house, like, if you can see it, it's the broad, well.
I don't think he's gonna need variances for those structures in the back. I think those will just be pre-existing non-conforming, uh, structures.
So, yeah, because that wood frame garage is. Looks like it's, is it over the property line?
That's the way I'm reading it, and I'm not sure, because it's so small. I'm trying to look at it with a magnifying glass.
Yeah, Jeannie, these, this survey is too small for us to see.
It does say that the roof is, uh, three feet, six inches, three point six inches over or something. Over the line.
I see one, one foot, nine inches, N-E over. Oh, there it is. Now I see that you're, where you're seeing the three feet, six inches.
Yeah, one side is over more than the other.
All right, so that's Mike, we got Michael Cunningham. We have to clean this up, don't we? I mean, we can't have a structure that's going over a property line.
But we can't approve it, so I don't know.
I would, I would just leave those alone as pre-existing non-conforming structures.
So we don't even acknowledge them?
I think, well, the thing in the, if there is a decision in order, I think it'll be acknowledged in there, is they're pre-existing non-conforming structures and don't receive a variance.
Okay.
It's in a warehouse clause, just that they weren't the subject of this.
This, this, this way, if they ever get, come down, they don't get replaced in place. Okay. Got it. That makes sense.
I'm fine with that.
All right, so again, because you did not build this deck, it's, you're just looking to clean this up. I, I don't, we, motion to go to public hearing?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
How, how big is this? How big is this deck? Twelve by twenty, yeah, so, okay, it's, it's not horribly huge, so I have a motion to advertise.
His motion.
Thank you, um, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. So again, Mr. Ramen, you've got to contact the, the clerk, contact Jeannie to, um, tomorrow or in the next couple of days. Uh, just to, because you've got to make sure you put a sign up on your property.
Okay, for the, uh, I mean, permit?
For the, so we'll see you next month, because we have to do a public hearing. We have to notify your neighbors and make sure that they have no issues with this deck.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Okay, and so as part of the public hearing process, we ask that you put a sign on your property, your front prop, the front part of your property, so that your neighbors know what the public hearing is about.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, so if you can.
About the sign, or I should get it from the Jeannie?
Yes, please. If you can contact Jeannie in the next couple of days, it doesn't have to go up right away, but it needs to go up, you know, in the next week or two.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, we'll see you next month then, okay?
Thank you, thank you, okay.
Okay.
Motion for a jury.
Thank you. I knew you were coming with that. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you, everyone.
See you next month.